Good evening, everyone. This is the Town Board Study Session. Today is Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. First item on the agenda this evening is the benefits of roundabouts. Greg, you want to start off?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, trustees. Thanks for the opportunity to come and talk tonight about roundabouts. I'm going to start off with a story, and we have a consultant here tonight who I'm going to introduce, and he's going to be the featured presentation. But go back in time 25 years ago, and I was working for the city of Loveland, and I hired a young EIT named Mark Johnson, who came to help me do development review for the city. And a couple of years, that was mid-'90s, a couple of years later, two brothers came to the city of Loveland. Their name, last name was McQuinney, and they said they wanted to develop a shopping center on the west side of town. And they had all these visions of Target and big-box retailers and access points that were very close to US 34. And so in order to be sensitive to the economic development needs and the applicants' needs and the safety needs, we did some research and learned that there was a new form of intersection control, new to us in Loveland. Roundabouts were a tool that could be used, didn't have the queuing problems associated with traffic signals, and would actually allow access placement at a different spacing than you would ideally see with a traffic signal. So one thing led to another. McQuinneys wanted to do a roundabout with their first phase, and Mark was interested and intrigued with the whole idea and volunteered to be the reviewer on those projects and actually take the lead in our effort to learn about roundabouts. Fast forward to 2016, and you know where my office is, on the north side of the building here. One afternoon, I saw for hours and hours flashing lights up at Wonderview and McGregor, and learned afterwards that a driver had made a mistake and pulled out in front of an oncoming car traveling pretty fast on state highway, and there was a fatality. The driver's passenger and wife was killed in that accident. And it was just a real sober reminder to me, to the assignment that we have in Public Works to be good stewards of the public trust and the public safety. Currently, we have three roundabouts under design in Estes Park, and here's one on Moraine Avenue. CDOT has one under design at Wonderview and McGregor. This is the location of the fatality a couple of years ago. And there was an open house on this in December, presented by CDOT's consultant. And our engineering staff is currently working on a roundabout at Community Drive in US 36. So tonight, we've got Mark Johnson here. Mark is the owner and founder and principal engineer for MTJ Roundabout Engineering. His company was founded in 2005 after he had spent four years working for the city of Loveland, and another four years working for Wisconsin DOT. Mark is a co-author of the 2010 FHWA Roundabout Design Guide, and he's a certified FHWA peer-to-peer roundabout reviewer and an active member of ITE and the TRB Transportation Research Board Roundabout Committee. So Mark is knowledgeable. He's been engaged in these types of discussions for years and years, designing. He can tell us how many roundabouts designed. He's done a lot of them. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark.
Thanks, Greg, and thanks for having me tonight. It's a pleasure to be here and to speak with you and have this opportunity. An overview of modern roundabouts, benefits, opportunities, and challenges. We have, you know, most of an hour available to us. If you have questions and comments that you want to start with now, I'm happy to kind of jot them down or start some discussion on that. If you want to save your questions to the end, that's fine. If you have a question while I'm speaking that you want to jump in, feel free to do that. This is a work-study session, so, you know, I have a fair bit of materials. It's meant to, as the presentation outline shows here, you know, talk about, provide you with an understanding of where roundabouts came from, right? A little bit of their history, their development, what's the engineering and the science behind them. We're going to review some uses, you know, that we're using them in different applications, lots of different applications. We're going to address some key issues that are often concerns and sticking points for the implementation of roundabouts, such as, you know, do trucks get through? How about freights? How about, you know, horse trailers, pedestrians? How do they work? How does it work for cyclists? And then we have a section on traffic planning opportunities. Greg sort of alluded to the project back in the city of Loveland. We'll look at some of the differences in how they operate compared to signals and the opportunities that that presents from a traffic planning perspective and community vitality perspective. And then lastly, we'll end with just a couple of case studies. So, you know, where communities have gone through this before, a couple of examples of that. And that's the outline of the presentation. Before I jump in, any questions that you want to? So, you know, roundabouts versus signals. So one of the concerns is when you give a presentation on roundabouts is it's biased towards roundabouts. Well, it naturally is. The nice thing about this opportunity here, we have more time. I've been in many situations where I have eight minutes in front of a board to, you know, sell the roundabout, and by gosh, you know, that is biased towards roundabouts, you know? And so the key is, and there's an image on the screen here of a cartoon from a project from some years back in New Hampshire, and, you know, the key is to evaluate the alternatives, right? What are the costs? What are the impacts of each viable alternative, starting with you're solving a problem, right? A congestion and/or safety problem, which is what we deal with intersections. So you want to compare the viable alternatives. You don't want to put a roundabout in just willy-nilly for the sake of a roundabout because you can plant flowers in the middle, for example, okay? So you do an engineering study comparing those things, cost, impacts, and how they perform. That can include business circulation near the roundabout and those sorts of things. So look at the benefits, look at the costs, and how does each solution achieve the project and/or community objectives? So a little bit of the background. So from the 1930s through the '50s, we installed what are called traffic circles or rotaries. There are quite a few still remaining on the East Coast, right? And so you have, you know, Colorado in general, and Estes Park, I'm sure, has folks from the East Coast who've moved here or visit here and or live here part-time. And, you know, we used to have public meetings, and people would come in and say, "Oh, my God, don't do those rotaries, they're horrible." And some people are like, "Oh, they're fine, I don't mind them." But the key is that, you know, they're very large. They were based on a very different design methodology. They were the precursor to the interchange that we have now. And so they worked great with Model Ts and Studebakers and much less traffic and slower speeds. But they don't work that well as time went on, as traffic went on. So the image here in the bottom right shows about a 600-foot diameter old traffic circle that was replaced in New York with a modern roundabout that's about 200 feet narrow. So let's talk about what is that? What is that? So we have the benefit of the science and engineering that went on in the UK. So they didn't, we stopped building them in the late, mid-late '40s in the US, and we just, and so we went, we have signals. That's what we see in every place across really most of North America. The UK, they didn't abandon. They're very, it's a small island, lots of traffic. They had a national imperative from this, you know, post-World War II. They had a lot of, you know, more cars on the roads and lots of congestion, many different sizes and shapes of circles. So they kept researching them and studying them. And in 1966, they decided the first thing we want to do is take circulating traffic and not have circulating traffic stop or yield to entering traffic. So they did some research, they say, you know, if we make entering traffic yield to circulating traffic, we're going to unlock our congested circles that we have. And so as the story goes, you know, one weekend, they went out in different regions, and they sent the crews out, and they switched the yield sign from circulating to the entering. People went to work Monday morning, and they thought, "Where's all the traffic?" They thought it was a banker's holiday or something because the congestion went way down. So that was the first step to what's referred to as a modern roundabout. It was a 1966 in the UK. And the Brits kept studying them. And we're not going to get into the details, but significant design research and experimentation was conducted over the course of many decades, and in particular, you know, through the '70s with track experiments and modifying existing projects and more track experiments, leading to design methodology that we use today, which is foundation, these are the foundational elements, which includes speed control, there's angles of entry, there's view angles and sight distance issues. And these are all captured in the, in our federal highways, or rather, it's called, it's the Federal Highways Roundabout Design Guide, if you will. So at the end of the day, roundabouts, you know, began to get implemented in other countries through the 1980s. The first US model roundabout was in the '90s here in North America, in the US. And so at the end of the day, there's circular intersections designed to control traffic, just like a signal. And we have methodologies and analysis and design to allow us to design for the site or the traffic that you're dealing with. So there's a little bit of, you know, from 1990, of a couple of roundabouts, and that we're building more and more in North America. So one of the things, you know, early on is, well, you know, show me an example of a roundabout like this one that we're doing here. And here can be anywhere in the country. And as it turns out, you know, we're putting roundabouts in lots of different contexts. Essentially, where there's an intersection, a roundabout may be a potential viable alternative. You know, sometimes they're putting in cultural and using them for public art in the central islands and historic districts and just plain old congestion relief. This is a project here for economic development to promote the growth of that community. Here's a project on a campus, you know, so lots of students, lots of pedestrians, lots of bicyclists in Portland, Maine. Urban revitalization, complete streets type projects are being used there as well. They're being used in transitional speed roadways and high-speed roadways. I was involved with some of the first high-speed applications. The key, the key is to address the drivers' needs on the different roads, right? So you have different design methods and principles that you apply depending on the context of the site you're working on. Yeah?
What's the speed that would qualify a high speed?
So high speed, like quote-high speed is greater than 45.
Okay.
And then 45 is sort of a transitional speed. And lots of times, posted 45, you can opt, people are driving 55 and that kind of thing. So.
Thank you.
Interchange ramps, roundabouts in series. So it's all, it's all based on roadway, traffic, transportation engineering, and the specific roundabout engineering that goes along with it to make these projects work and work well. Corridors, here's a project in Anchorage, Alaska. Nice thing about this project is often with roundabouts, you don't have to widen the road. The needs, roadway widths are often predicated on the needs of signals along the road. You need, you need the two or three lanes to queue the cars up, so when the light turns green, you can get them through. With roundabouts, they operate differently. In addition, you can see here, this is a large grocery store with a right-in, right-out. One benefit of roundabouts is from an access control perspective and a business access and circulation perspective is you have equal priority if you're making a U-turn or if you're going straight or right or left. And so you can take advantage of some of these unique operational characteristics of roundabouts and take advantage of those for different sites to improve circulation, access to businesses. You know, moreover, this, this road didn't need to be widened, we didn't cut into parking, we had less costs, less impacts as a whole, if this was compared to for signals along that corridor. So safety, I mean, you know, safety is the thing that you hear a lot about roundabouts. And the key is, there are a lot of crashes at intersections across the country. I mean, I sometimes joke that if one person gets bit by a shark during spring break, it's on national news. But crashes that occur in communities, we don't really, we're pretty much unaware of what's going on. But as transportation engineers, we know what's going on. And so safety is an aspect of roundabout that is important. There's a lot of accidents that occur at intersections across the country. Roundabouts, the T-bones, the high-speed T-bones are the ones that create the injury, the severe injuries and fatalities. And there's a lot of pedestrian injuries as well at intersections and fatalities at signalized intersections as well. So why are roundabouts safer? It's conflict points. If you sort of draw up a kind of a conceptual four-legged intersection, you count all the different possibilities of running into someone, there's just more conflict points at a standard intersection versus a roundabout. So the probability of running into someone goes down because you have less conflict points. Moreover, speed control is a foundational design element. So here's a braking distance based on our engineering criteria. At 20 miles per hour, you have some perception-reaction time before you figure out, you get your foot on the brake, and so 125 feet to stop at 20 miles per hour. At 50 miles per hour, that goes up exponentially to about 475 feet. So if someone makes a mistake and pulls out and you're going faster, it's that much more difficult to avoid the crash. And then speed differential, I mean, this is similar to the T-bone crash. The accident severity goes up as the speed differential goes up. And so that T-bone is the worst speed differential you can have. You can see it here, the accident severity on the Y-axis. So in a conceptual way, right, an all-way stop here, if four cars pull up, you can't go simultaneously, right? You have to wait your turn to go. If you go at the same time, you hit a car. A roundabout, it's physically separated with the central island. You have four splitter islands, and so four cars can pull up, and everyone can essentially simultaneously move forward without running into each other. And that improves the safety and improves the operations of the intersection. So it's take, you know, it took some time, but Federal Highways about 10 years ago came out with the statement that it's preferred safety alternative for a wide range of intersections. It is an alternative for all new federally funded intersection projects. This used to be a big issue that feds weren't really on board with them yet, but they are now. Emergency response, freight and trucks is often a concern. This is, there's now roundabouts throughout the country that have fire stations nearby them, or in this case, a leg right off of the roundabout. And actually, one of the first projects I worked on, the fire chief, I was in a public meeting, and I was sort of speaking to a crowd and giving the presentation, and people asking questions about it, and it was new and different, and people had various significant concerns. And the fire chief stood up in this community, and he's the guy that the community looked to. He'd been there for 30 years, and he said, "You know, I thought this was a really bad idea when I first heard about it. I called around to some of my colleagues, and in a couple of minutes, he said, 'I think the roundabout's the best choice here.'" I mean, I couldn't have spoke for three weeks and had the same impact on the community that he, the guy that they looked to, had by making those comments. So it still can be a concern, but it's a work. So Federal Highways has a really nice brochure out. If you don't have it, you should, you should have that available for folks. It actually talks about emergency response considerations and concerns, and, you know, it talks about the frequently asked questions that you get for that, such as, you know, "Will our trucks get through?", "What about response time?". I mean, at the end of the day, the studies are all showing the trucks get through very, very hurriedly, response time is typically improved. And then it talks about driver reaction and those sorts of issues. So freight and trucks. So this, this image up here on the left side shows a truck hung up on the central island on the curb. Clearly, if that, that driver comes to my meeting or your meeting and looks at me and says, "I don't like roundabouts, they don't work very well for me," you can understand why. This roundabout's not designed for the users. So, so design is important. How they're designed is very important. So we use design software that has the trucks in it, and we size them for the design vehicles that we want to design for. And so it's not guesswork, it's not lucky, it's design work, it's engineering. We can design, I went through a project recently in Scottsdale, Arizona, very, very equestrian area, and so designing for that type of vehicle, typical trucks can be designed for as well. We have different design methodologies that we can use depending on how many trucks are at the site and those sorts of things that can determine what we want to do. This is showing a flared, you know, a project, a specific design of the, a truck, this is a state highway. About 18% heavy trucks traverse this roundabout every day. This is a project in Ohio that is a, they want a very pedestrian-friendly environment, it's also on a state highway. So balancing the needs of the vehicles and the speed control becomes the design exercise in that case. And there's design techniques that we can use to accommodate both the trucks and keep speed slow for the safety of everyone. So Peds, Bikes, American with Disabilities Act, there's design treatments to address heads and bikes. And there's, there's a, there's a large volume of research, both now in the US and in other countries that have been using rounds for a lot longer. And they all point to a very safe pedestrian record. And so the, it's really, and it's counterintuitive. And we're going to look at some videos and show some pedestrians going through this. You know, this is showing that project in Ohio and some of the enhancements that we did, such as landscaping through here, ballards, pedestrian-scale lighting can be, you know, depending on the site, can be used to improve and enhance the pedestrian environment. This is a project in Springfield, Oregon, that has a bus rapid transit, you know? So there's a lot of pedestrians crossing to get to the buses, there's shared-use pathways. They've used, in that case, some rectangular rapid flashing beacons for the crossings to, as a pedestrian beacon enhancement in this project. So pedestrian crossings at roundabouts, there's lower speeds, there's shorter crossing distances, and pedestrians cross one direction of travel at a time. So this is the intersection before the roundabout. So, you know, from a delay perspective, this pedestrian experiences a minute before the signal changes and you get across. Usually, if that's me, I'm thinking I should have just drove, or it might have been quicker. But it just shows the two-stage crossing on the bottom, and it'll show this pedestrian getting across, I'll just loop it. She gets across a couple, three, four times before this pedestrian goes across. You might have noticed a bunch of cyclists going through this. This is on a high, you know, it's actually an Iron Mine route, so there's lots of training, lots of cyclists go through this roundabout in the summers. So anyway, I think you get the point. We'll move on. Quite a bit less delay. Now, this is, this is some quotes from a school bus operator, talks about how it's easier for them. I would recommend roundabouts in other districts. This is a school crossing guard. She's, this is a quote I lifted out of a local newspaper, and she said, "Personally, I love them. You only have to stop one lane of traffic at a time. The cars can't, the cars go slow through the roundabout, so the crossing aspect is great." So this is a project where we looked at a signal versus a roundabout. There's a school here on this corner, pretty typical widening with signalization compared to a roundabout. So when we look at the roundabout crossing, there's about 60 feet of crossing, and so that's more exposure. You have right turns on red, you often have permissive lefts that can create problems as well. So the roundabout, you have basically about 18 feet at a time that you cross into what's called the pedestrian refuge, the split around. So you cross one direction at a time. And by the way, these crossing locations are based on that UK science and engineering, which is where cars are slow, right? So when you're going slow in your car, and we all can relate to this, if you're at a, if someone sits a ped waiting, and you're going 35 miles per hour, nine times out of 10, if you stop for that ped, they're going to be nervous, you know, and they're going to wait and cross you through. And so oftentimes, they just keep going, right? But if you're already going 15, 20 miles per hour, it's so easy to just let up on your gas and let someone go across. And in roundabouts, that's what roundabouts, it's built into how they operate. Get into multi-lane roundabouts, this is a project, a roundabout on Michigan State Campus on a football Saturday, so groups of pedestrians crossing at a time. This project just shows how they operate. And this is a video I shot of high-volume intersection in Loveland. This is path, I think, and 34. So this is, you know, again, you know, you can see the comparison, you know, peds are walking here with signals, you know, here's a ped, it's hard to see him, he's coming up to the corner, he or she is going to press the button, and he has a long wait before the signal changes, before you can cross. And it's not, it's not particularly pedestrian-friendly to just wait forever to cross, and plus you have one, two, three, four, five, six lanes of traffic to try to cross. This is a typical afternoon during classes in that particular example. Here, the pedestrians, it's kind of painful, but wait, we're going to wait, wait for him to go. How long does it take? Oh, there he goes. You have right turners on red, that, you know, there's, there's not, it's not conflict-free at a signal, there's right turners, there's permissive lefts. It's not conflict-free at the roundabout either. You know, there's, there's, it's not a panacea, per se, okay? But when designed well, they operate very well. Here's a group of, I shot a drone recently, this, this is a high-volume, two-by-two roundabout with some kids that are probably middle-school age. This is a community outside of Madison, where I live, Wisconsin, that, it's a community where kids still don't wear helmets when they bike, like when I grew up, okay? These kids, there's one kid on the handlebars, there's one kid pushing a skateboard, and they went to the pedestrian refuge, they're waiting for someone to slow down for them to go. So the vehicles here are traveling at about 15 miles per hour through here, and so here someone stopped and they went across. Bikes. Roundabouts work well with bikes, whether you're putting on-street, shared-use bike lanes, excuse me, on-street bike lanes or off-street shared-use type pathways. Roundabouts work well. It's the crossings that you're dealing with with that. Another thing is that, you know, we often don't need the same amount of cross-section with roundabouts versus signals. And so this is a comparison of a project in, this is in North Carolina, I believe, that did what's called a road diet. Took lanes off the road, added ped and bike facilities within the right-of-way that they had, and removed vehicle lanes. But they still are moving traffic as well as they were previously. This is a project in Lafayette, California, shared-use pathways connecting to regional paths, as well as on-street bike lanes as well. So this is the first roundabout in their community. It's been open now for a couple of years.
Can you go back? You said something about on-street bikeways, I'm not seeing those on there. Can you point to where the on-street?
Well, it's a little tough to see. This, see the green paint here?
Okay.
That's, that's the ending of the bike lane.
And then you're putting it on a pedestrian path.
And then, so the cyclist, the higher-level cyclist has the option to take a lane as a vehicle and proceed through the roundabout, so if they're going to make a right turn, they can stay on the road. they can stay on the road, or if they were going to make a, a left and they want to stay on the road, they would cross, like, uh, into the lane, take a vehicle lane and go through, if you're a higher-level cyclist, or you can exit onto a shared-use pathway and kind of proceed, uh, at a slower rate, and, and if you're, like, in this case, they're connecting to a regional path over here, or if you're crossing to go home and those sorts of things, you can do that.
So my question is, I mean, let's talk specifically about Estes Park, are you, are we looking at having both of those issues, I mean, both of those possibilities for bikes, so it's either on-lane or bicycle path next to, what's the design look like in Estes?
Well, it's dependent on the project.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely right. In locations, uh, north up here, we don't have any on-street bike lanes coming up to the roundabout, so it doesn't make a lot of sense to, for a short distance, stripe an on-street bike lane when we don't have a, a lane feeding or receiving the cyclist, but we do have an attached multi-use trail, and so, we would expect if the cyclist, the experienced cyclist is probably already in the lane acting as a car, and they'll go through as a vehicle would. I think the predominant user is going to be on the path, going through the intersection at the crosswalk, acting as a pedestrian.
Okay. Signage for that, is there, I'm just wondering about design signage for the bicyclist?
There are, there is signage for the cyclists, uh, bike lane ends, take lane. One of the things that's, you know, with, with some of the buffered bike lane, uh, design techniques, we're starting to use the green paint, which is a transitional to indicate to cyclists that the lane is ending, so you, you want to visually show them with the marking, and then you can also supplement that with signage as well.
Good.
There are pedestrian signage as well that we would have. So this, this shows a project in, in Napa, California, that, uh, off of, uh, I think this is one oh one, um, entrance to the, to the, as a gateway to their downtown, uh, to roundabout proposal, and so they're, they're, in this case, uh, they're putting in, uh, what's, a, a, a ten-foot wide shared-use bike lane on both sides of the road, so cyclists can either stay on those, or if you, if you're an on-street cyclist, you can stay on the roadway as well. And so it, it really, um, gives you the option to do either. Which is, which is really, uh, through the course of these projects in Lafayette, there's a, uh, San Francisco has a very strong bicyclist community, and they showed up in Lafayette and, and, um, and in Napa, and it started to make me realize, you know, what, we really actually have a very good, roundabouts are really good for bikes, I mean, they're, they're, they're quite good, and, uh, so, you know, here's, here's back to, one of the, there is some, there is some, you know, if someone Googles it, you can pull up re, you know, data that's decades old, that's from old traffic circles, okay? In the UK, which says there's, you know, uh, poor cyclist safety record, okay? This is a, a, a roundabout in New Jersey, a rotary, I should say, an old rotary, that's very large, vehicle speeds are very high, and you can see those cyclists had to get on it to get in there. And those speeds, you know, you, that's not much fun as a cyclist, I, I know, I mean, I, I don't ride as much as I used to, but I still, I tend to just stay off the roads. But, um, here's an example of, of a project, a modern roundabout, and, and this is a cycling group that's in an afternoon, and they're in the road, I don't know where they started from exactly, probably up in the community up here, and they're on the road, there is actually, and they're, they're kind of headed out of town, they might be getting to some country roads, uh, there is a, a pathway over here on this side of the road that connects to a regional pathway, but they're on the road, and it just, you know, it just shows, you know, their speed and the car's speeds are very similar, about fifteen miles per hour, uh, in this case. It's a relatively compact-sized roundabout, speeds are approximately fifteen miles per hour when drivers are circulating. Here's a project, a video I shot standing at, this is the first roundabout in Wisconsin on the state highway system, and so I would go visit it from time to time, and I caught on a summer afternoon, a couple of kids that were probably twelve on their BMX bikes. These kids have helmets on, one kid doesn't have a shirt on, I don't know, they may not even be twelve, they, look, you tell me, I mean, you know, they're not twelve, probably, maybe they're ten to twelve. Anyway, this is a community, you know, these kids are on their bikes, and these are the things that, that I got into this business for, is to promote, you know, all modes. And roundabouts, while not perfect, offer a lot of, a lot of benefits. So, we talked about roadway planning opportunities, so when we have congestion at signalized intersections, our typical course of attack is to widen the whole road and add more lanes at the intersection. That's our, that's our traffic planning paradigm in our industry. Roundabouts, you saw this project earlier, offer a different, a different way to do business, so you can put capacity at the intersection with less roadway width with roundabouts compared to signals. You have more roadway geometric flexibility because you don't have to deal with the speed condition when the light is green, uh, you have intersection spacing versatility because with signals, you need specific spacing for progression, right? When the light's green, you want to keep people going through, so we like to keep spacing, uh, certain distances. Roundabouts, all that, and then you have different access control opportunities, uh, we talked about the U-turn opportunities and those sorts of things that can promote, these are, this, these are all businesses along, this is a McDonald's, this is a Walgreens, this is a grocery store, this is a commercial corridor. So, um, this is another, you know, kind of illustrates the, our typical widening approach to, to growth in communities, and this is, this is the same road north of here into their downtown, where we maintained one direction of travel in each direction along the road, this is a, this is a county trunk highway, this is a state highway, there's a gas station here, Walgreens, and an auto repair shop here, other businesses in side streets, and so, there's a, this, that into their downtown, they didn't want to widen the road to four lanes, that was going to be what was going to occur here. And so, um, it's a challenging project, lots of controversy, lots of difficult public meetings, and, 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 uh, at the end of the day, though, it, it got constructed after a lot of hard work by many people. You know, this is a, this is a video, a short video, maybe three minutes long, but it shows a little bit of, of what was there beforehand, this is, you're looking at it now, uh, which was a signal, it's very congested, typical, you know, P, you know, afternoon and morning congestion, this is, uh, you had businesses with cars, you know, backed through the driveways, so you couldn't get in and out of the businesses near the intersection very well, uh, and it was just, you know, it's kind of a mess during the busy times of day, morning and afternoon. Showing a car waiting, trying to get out, this shows this queued up for a long, you know, for about a mile back at the signal, you know, it was, it was, um... They're waiting almost a minute and a half, there's large trucks and, and large trucks through this intersection, this is a state highway, I often gas up at this intersection and just like to gas up there so I can watch the roundabout, and almost every time there's a semi going through. So here's the signal that we were going to remove access, that's what you do with signals, they're, they're, they're too close. Roundabouts, we can allow access because you have slower speeds, it's easier to get in and out of the intersection near a roundabout, and you have less queuing, so you don't have that issue with the queuing. And so we can leave round, uh, driveways in without the same detrimental effects that we would if we were to, with the signals, which can really promote, uh, business access, and just vitality. Just shows a little bit, and this is a pro, this is their first roundabout in this community, um, it's designed well, it was implemented well, constructed well, and when those, those things come into place, their design, so drivers, it's not much of a learning curve, the decision-making skill required at a roundabout, it's things that you already know, and we want to design them in a way so it's self-explanatory through the geometry, the signing, and the pavement marking. So we want to use conventions that drivers are used to and, and geometric principles that, that, that are based on engineering science, so the drivers understand, I yield to people circulating. People still make mistakes, they're not perfect, you can, you know, uh, you can see little things that go on, but if you step back a little and you look at the statistics and you look at it, you know, over the course of a year, or two years, or five years, or ten years, or twenty years, roundabouts, um, begin to really, uh, have a lot of benefits. Okay, here's the tough part sometimes, public involvement, alright, so, change is hard, it took me like five years, I mean, I might be slower than your average bear and, and being an engineer, you know, we're not trained in, in, in change, right, we're not necessarily change engines, we're engineers. So it took me a long time figuring, I took the, I have this cartoon in here, and this is from somewhere in Europe, right? We all kind of had this impression that, well, the Europeans are doing them, and everyone loves them, and there's no issues, and they have the same issues, it's, it's humans, we're all human, we all have the same essential issues, we have, we're concerned about change, we don't like change, we have, uh, natural apprehension. Another, you know, European one, and, uh, you know, and then here's, here's some, you know, beware the scourge of traffic circles, you know, and they'll get, you know, they're going to use this for experiments, the state's broke and they're spending money like drunken sailors, uh, you know, I mean, uh, I think the roundabout's wrong, and so these are the type of things that have gone on at every, almost every roundabout across the North America and, and, you know, Europe for that matter, so, you know, this is, I'm sure some of you are familiar with the roundabouts up in the Vail Valley, this was the first interchange they did up there, and they went through the same things, lots of, lots of worry, you know, this is their main way into town, and, and obviously, if people can't get in there, people are not going to come and spend money. So, you know, the editorial boards are, maybe it's not so bad, uh, we had a lot of concerns, but people seem to have figured it out. And so, it's, it's, and there's done, you know, this is a project in, uh, this is a project in Wisconsin, this is one of the first roundabouts in this, in a smaller town in the middle of Wisconsin, uh, side street, lots of delay, school buses waiting, uh, just lots and lots of delay, this is a state highway through, through the town, so we looked at a number of alternatives, what, you know, the conventional alternatives to fix this problem were all very expensive, more expensive than the roundabout. And so the roundabout got constructed, and I got this quote from the local paper, "As a resident of the neighborhood for fifty-five years, Earl, who's eighty-two, figures a roundabout will control traffic, they've got it marked well and that'll help, because people have to slow down," some said, said Earl, who took his turn around it, uh, on Tuesday. I went around, here's the best part, this is a, you know, in Wisconsin, this is a strong endorsement, "I went around it and it's not any worse than any other street." And that's kind of what we're shooting for, right? We, you know, we don't want to oversell, this isn't like can, you know, sliced bread, but, um, here's a public involvement case study number two, so that you've seen a little bit of this intersection already with this pedestrian, this was a, a challenging intersection, you had trucks that were going over curbs, it's an older intersection, you have a, a gas and convenience store on the corners, um, you had, you had lots of queuing and congestion during the afternoon, people coming and going from work, et cetera. This video kind of pans off to the right here in a moment, just shows a long line of cars, um, see if it gets to it. I'll trust that you know what a long line of cars looks like, so we looked at, we looked at, you know, what, what are we going to do? With the signal, we were going to widen, add a turn lane here, extend the turn lane on this leg, which was going to remove some of the business access that they had here for a two-way left turn lane, we're going to move the road about fifteen feet closer to four homes along here, a little impact to a cemetery, they didn't seem to mind either way, um, we had a little impact on this corner as well. The roundabout, we, we could, we could preclude widening the roads, we weren't going to chew into people's front yards, we had impacts here, these guys were going to lose their access with the signal, and so, uh, this impacted buildings that they were going to be impacted anyway, uh, the guy who was here, the auto-potty guy, ended up buying the remnant and building a new shop with better access. We maintained the business access for this convenience store here, same thing with the cemetery, they didn't care either way, and we maintain these, there's a small dentist office here. So, this is the funny part, when I was out there constructing this project, this guy showed up, recently retired, showed up every day to tell me there's no way this is going to work, every single day he's out there. So this is opening day, is a big deal, we don't get visitors to our intersection opening days, right? You know, and this is, this is the, this is the village administrator, Pat Dan, and his high school buddies, I don't know, and his granddaughter, and, uh, uh, the, the, the telling thing was that the barricades came down, the policemen went through, and it was open, everyone, oh my god, what's going to happen? And the beautiful thing was, I looked over at Pat Dan, after about a minute, he started, everyone started looking at their watch, maybe I should go mow the lawn, maybe I should go get some groceries, there's nothing going on here. And it was a non-event, okay? And that's the project that opened up, non-circular to fit the site, pretty challenging, you know, this, this convenience store, subsequent to the roundabout, they have expanded, they bought a lot next door, they, they put in a bigger, nicer store with more gas pumps, the, that was the roundabout there, the village put in four more roundabouts, they liked it so much. Alright, last case study, we're going to end on. This is, uh, the Monterey Peninsula, so, up, up north here, Highway One is up to San Francisco, et cetera, uh, this is the entrance to Pebble Beach Community and the Monterey Peninsula, primary access. Here's the off-ramp and the on-ramp to the highway, this is the entrance to the Pebble Beach Golf and, and Housing Community, this is back towards Monterey this way. Very congested, uh, problematic intersection for, for a couple of decades, um, you know, you noticed emergency response stuck in the signal, in the traffic, um, there's a hospital located right here from the intersection, so emergency responses, so, real briefly, uh, our, our alternative analysis showed the conventional approach with four-lane road and two signals was going to cost around twenty-seven million. The roundabout, we ended up with two roundabouts plus another one, a small little one at the entrance here, was estimated twelve million, so a saving of fifteen million dollars in addition to a significant reduction in, um, widening and, and, and pine trees and other vegetation, et cetera. So there it is, it got opened up, a very challenging project, doesn't look particularly that exciting, but it's, it's a pretty, uh, very challenging project, I will say. They have lots of events on Monterey, they have lots of events in Pebble Beach, Car Loading Week was a big concern, uh, the local paper came out and said, "It's a great project, uh, good use of funds." And I'm going to end it on, with a four-minute video, if I may, that, um, has, has some, turn the volume back on, it's not often that we, um... The microphone, but it looks like the, I don't know if the, if the... There's the microphone, but it looks like my internet's off. A little eye cam, eye cam there, we'll find out.
A highway-to-highway roundabout is completely new for this area. But now you see, it's so easy, even the engineering trucks can go through, who knows? Maybe even a fire truck can go through. You think it can do it again? There it goes, it can do it again. And I guarantee you that's way faster than it would have been when we had all those stoplights.
Roundabouts proved to be safer than signalized intersections. I know Rich Deal, our traffic engineer, who's, who's the real city rep who's made this happen for us, assured us that it was safer, and being a grandpa who said, "I have to drive a roundabout," he was right, even I can get through this thing, Rich. Aesthetics, isn't this thing beautiful? And the landscaping hasn't grown in yet, really? This looks so much better than it did before, and when I first saw it, I thought, how, how are they going to make this attractive? They did, it, it's so outstanding.
It worked out beautifully, and I can speak as a, as a resident, because I have lived just inside the gate for more than twenty years, and I saw it when it, when it was just traffic, and I saw it in the participatory, in the, uh, community gatherings to decide whether or not this was going to be a good idea, through the design space, through the, um, the construction, and then today here, and I must tell you- Through the design space, through the um, the construction, and then today here. And I must tell you that at every step of the way. There was really a lot of community involvement. And I think that's one of the things that made such a big difference. The communication that Tamsi brought forward with the community kept us all apprised of what was happening. And so there were no unexpected um situations. You know, we knew when it was going to be delayed. But for me, as the resident, I must say, I am so pleased. There was traffic, there were problems before the idea of a roundabout, and now there's none. As you see people go by giving us the thumbs up, it shows that the community is with us.
We are all very, very dependent on this uh, on this vital link in our transportation network.
What a team effort. If you look at the middle of the circle is the heart of our community. There's arms that extend to Carmel, Pebble Beach, Pacific Grove, Chump, Monterey, uh, Highway One, North and South. And connecting all of our communities in a manner that is uh, improving safety, which is, I think, our overriding concern in any road design and how we prioritize projects. This improves safety. It also improves the ability of emergency vehicles to get, to get to Chump. This project is a proven success and it will indeed be the model as Tamsi looks and other communities look. To replicating this model in other thoroughfares in Monterey County, particularly Highway 68.
On behalf of our 2,300 employees and our 400 physicians, want to thank everybody for the work on the roundabout. It has improved the congestion. Uh, we have a saying in the medical field, uh, time is muscle. Uh, and so if you're coming to the hospital, uh, and you're having a stroke or a heart attack, believe it or not, 15 seconds makes a world of difference. So many thanks to everybody involved, community, hospital, and Montage Health. It's very appreciative. Thank you.
It's not often that we get videos like that. And so it's um, this is available on, on, out there. If anyone wanted to look at it. So. Uh, it's a nice uh, summary of, of, of a project that, that turned out really well for that community. Now, so in summary, uh, there, there's benefits. Uh, roundabouts aren't, aren't the solution in all places. If you. Uh, have a problem, you want to look at the alternatives and see if the roundabout, how it compares to other viable alternatives. It can allow for, you know, potentially reduce widening, some interspace, intersection spacing versatility, opportunities potentially for improved business access and circulation as well. So with that, thank you. And if you have any questions, um, happy to.
Yeah. Uh, what experience do you have in educating a visitor population that comes through a small town that now has a roundabout? And there's several million visitors a year.
So if you recall, we, we, I showed you a couple of slides from, from Vail. So that main Vail entrance and is uh, is, is, the, the community was very concerned about that issue. You know, people, they rely on people flying into DIA or wherever and, and, or from different, coming up, getting a rental car. Parking it, spend their money and then leave, right? That's their economy, which is not dissimilar to your economy in terms of a tourist-based economy. What I would say is that the design, the geometrics, the signing and the marking of roundabouts are done in a way that drivers, it's self-explanatory. There is certainly a, a learning curve. One thing you hear often is um, you know, people, you know, well, I went through it once and I, I was a little confused. Then I, then I, I went home, I went to lunch and I came back and it just felt like it was always there. And that's the engineering. It's, 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 it's addressing the driver expectancy and the engineering and the decision-making that we're used to doing on a regular basis. You can do a lot, you can, there's quite a bit of outreach going on uh, with, with roundabouts. There are things that you can do. You, you know, you can put together um. Community outreach of videos to show how to drive roundabouts. And there's lots of examples out there, materials to borrow from.
Vale would be a good comparable community about what's worked, how they did their signage, what experience they had.
Uh, yeah. I mean, you know, I think uh, after they did that main Vail that opened in 1995, they couldn't build the roundabouts down at the West Vale interchange. Quick enough to, to satisfy the community, to relieve the congestion. And if you've been up there lately and uh, you know, almost every single interchange, going west from there is, is all roundabouts. So um, there's initial concern and, and, and fear of the unknown. But, but in almost, in almost, in, in every case, um, when they're, when the roundabouts designed and implemented well, it's a non-issue.
Thank you.
Is it, um, is a three-way uh, roundabout following the same principle as yield to enter? I was just kind of thinking about coming in off of 36 and. Do you kind of just keep going or is it always, you know, is it always yield to enter? I mean, it.
Always yield to enter. There are, there are. There are interchanges that, that.
That's, I don't need a sketch, but yeah, just in general.
But generally you want yield at entry. So you want consistency on that. And so that, that's a really.
So you, you don't have the option of just moving people down the highway? And, and some in the community drive as much?
You, you, you know, there's, there's designs. You could have like a bypass, you know, and.
Right. But still it's yield when you get in it.
Well, in the case of your, your community drive roundabout, it would be yield at entry.
Okay.
Yeah. And uh, and that, you know, addressing that driver expectancy, those folks who have been coming here forever. Um, and they're not used to that. So that, the, the dress, the driver expectancy, if something's changing up ahead. And slow down. So we have a little horizontal change and then speed control and the markings and the signing that you need to yield to circulating traffic.
Would you say injuries or congestion accidents, what drives most communities to a roundabout? Do they try to fix an intersection or is it part of a bigger plan?
It can go both ways. It's going both ways, part of a bigger plan. Often it's just spot improvements to either relieve congestion or a safety problem. And it, it can be either or.
I, I really like the shorter distance for pedestrians. The refuge issue I think is really big for us because. I don't know if you've ever seen in front of uh, uh, the Safeway gas station from the, from the visitor center, but it's, it's a regular track meet over there.
Yeah.
So I, I, I do like that about the roundabouts. Uh, space is a big issue for us. A lot of the pictures you showed was a big area. We don't have a lot of big areas.
Pebble Beach wasn't very big.
So that's more about, that's like, that's like an, it's kind of an optical illusion of how it's set up. It seems pretty vast.
It's an optical illusion.
Okay, okay.
Tight spot.
And does, does it need to be a bigger area for our guests with big motorhomes that they're pulling?
We design that, you know, it's interesting. You think size is, is what you need.
Right.
And there's more to it than just the diameter of it. And how they come in and how we design it can uh, allow for the larger vehicles to go through even with a smaller size.
And business access around it is actually better than a, than a regular intersection. I know, you know, 50 years ago, it was really nice to have a corner intersection. You know, mom and pop store, but it almost seems detrimental now, but I don't know. What's your experience with that?
So, I mean, one of the reasons that I, the light bulb went off with me at roundabouts, where Greg mentioned, we were do, I worked for him in development review. We used to go to these meetings called concept development review meetings. And I remember sitting through these meetings, people come in with a business idea to redevelop a corner. I blame Greg. Greg would do, Greg's boss or Greg would deliver the message, oh, by the way, you're going to take those accesses out. We're going to make it a right-in, right-out. You're going to put in a median. And they'd, they'd be like, oh God, you know, we wanted the access. We want, you know. Roundabouts are counterintuitive. I mean, um, it's called functional area, you know, but. The way that roundabouts work with the slow speeds always on the approach and as the exit. So it's, it's more difficult to make a decision. We can all relate to. If you're on a side street and traffic's going 50. And you're trying to choose, judge a gap for someone going this way and this way. It's, it's, it's a, it's a higher level decision. And that's when you make a wrong decision, you might get a crash, right? If speeds are lower. It's easier to make a decision. And if you go out and you, and you kind of don't make a good decision, it's easier for those people to slow down. Roundabouts had that built in, right? Slower speeds always near the roundabout. And so. You can allow access without the same detrimental effects that you would have with the signal. The signal, you have to deal with either a queued up situation with its red or a at-speed condition when it's green. And so those, the speed, the less queuing can allow you to maintain access. And then you can actually, the left's out of the tri, uh, the ch, are the problem movements out of a side street or out of a business. You're judging gaps both directions. If you, if, for example, if you have two roundabouts and you have an access in between them and you, let's just say you preclude the left's out. Right? But the business wants full movement. The nice thing with, if there's a roundabout at either side of that, you go, you make a U-turn and you can have the directionality that you want. And so it's not as nice as a left out, but it's a much safer, you can, you can reduce those conflicts, which improves the safety and the efficiency of the roadway. While maintaining that circulation connectivity that you want for business.
Last thing and I'll let somebody else speak. Weatherwise, a roundabout isn't significantly a bad weather problem anymore than another section. Better, uh, taking care of it when there's a lot of snow. I know, uh, you know, I have seen people in bad weather conditions, probably under the influence T-bone up onto the roundabout.
Yeah, that can happen. I mean, if you're not fail-safe, if there's slippery and someone's.
Which is probably better than running through a full intersection.
Yeah, typically you have, you have single vehicle crashes in that situation where they run into the middle as opposed to running into someone else. So from a, from a safety perspective, if that was your question.
That, that, does, how does weather affect a roundabout?
So there's kind of safety and then maintenance perhaps is the other issue. So. You know, when I, when I first tried to implement roundabouts in Wisconsin, which is a snowy area, I had videos that we had, because we didn't have, other than Vail, there weren't any in the country. So we had videos from people in Norway. Showing the maintenance guys in Norway talking about, it's not a problem. We were concerned, but it's really, really works just fine. And then so. The maintenance folks, um. I remember in, in Wisconsin, the county, the county highway folks, the highway departments maintain all state highways and the county. And I was at one of my projects and the, the high, truck driver, the ploter was out kind of checking it out in the fall before winter. And I, I went over and talked to him and he's like, geez, what'd they do this for? You know, I don't know what I'm going to do here. And so I just started talking to him. Well, you know, it's actually, you just go around and. And you started looking at it and thinking about it. I was like, oh yeah, it doesn't seem that bad. And that's really, that's, you know, that's the experience. It's, it's a little different, a little bit of getting used to, a little kind of getting over that hump of something different. But the, you know, depending on how they, you know, how you do a specific site, you know, you, can we keep the same pattern we have or are we going to do something different? There might be a little adjustments, but um. I mean, you know, it's, it's. Where they're putting these in in northern climates, the, the maintenance folks are, are. They, they have initial concern, but they, they, they don't have any afterwards really.
Couple of questions. Um, and I'm thinking about, Greg, I'm thinking about um, McGregor and bypass intersection up here. And I guess my que, my question is, um, pedestrians with disabilities, uh, that became an issue uh, when we were redoing that intersection up there. Uh, that someone either, you know, hearing or vision impaired, that sort of that island refuge with constantly moving traffic. Probably is not the best situation for them, that in fact, stop traffic would be better for that, that person with, uh, you know, either hearing or vision disability. How do you address that with pedestrians with those issues in a roundabout? Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I, I understand. So it's a, it's an issue of, of, of vision impaired folks and/or hearing impaired pedestrians. And um, and this has been an ongoing issue and concern of roundabouts for, for as long as I've been doing them. And it, and it's, it ends a concern. If you have vision impaired pedestrians in the area, um, you're going to want to implement enhancements. To better accommodate that vision impaired person.
And what does that, what does that enhancement look like? That's what I'm after.
So um. It can start with wayfinding treatments that allow someone, simple things, simple wayfinding. So with someone with a cane. You know, how they get trained to follow, you want to implement the things that they know, how to follow paths to make, to get to the correct crossing. Enhancements that, for example, ballards that you might see more in a downtown setting with pedestrian crossings, maybe not necessarily out here. But baller to the car, which just simply gives indication to a driver. Uh, and almost an unconscious, say, oh, that, that might, there might be a pedestrian present there, right? So simple things like that. The speed control component is really important. You want speeds, vehicular speeds. So a lot of studying going on with what does accessibility mean? And one of the key things that they found with roundabouts specifically is slower speeds. You want the vehicular speeds less than, not more than 20 at those pedestrian crossings. That's sort of one of the criteria to meet accessibility criteria.
When you say 20 miles an hour, is that the approach speed to that intersection?
That's the speed, that's the speed at the pedestrian crossing, whether it's approaching or exiting. And typically it's an issue at the exit.
Okay.
But it can, you know, at non-peak times, it can also, you know, you design for the approach as well. So, so those are foundational safety elements. Then you have the enhancements. I already started talking, the ballers, some of the wayfinding treatments, pedestrian scale lighting. And then you can go up from there like pedestrian, the rapid flashing beacons, push button. There's this typical, uh, for vision impaired pedestrians that, you know, it's, it's braille. It has the chirpers and those sorts of things. That you can add to supplement uh, some of those foundational elements.
So, so I guess the bottom line is, do you view a roundabout it as just as safe for a, for a person with disabilities as a full stoplight? Or is it less?
Just as safe. The research shows it's just as safe.
Okay, okay, fair enough. I'll go with that.
Can I piggyback on that question?
Sure.
So when we're talking about the roundabouts here and especially like on 36, it might be a question for Greg. Like I love pedestrian crossing lights that have lights, you know, flashing that say, you know, yield and there's pedestrians, whatever. How do we work it out with CDOT? Since it's not our road.
Well, this is, this topic was discussed with CDOT at the open house for the Wonder View Roundabout. And they have agreed that they will take the rapid flash beacons that we installed a year ago for the existing crossing. We, we just have two-way stop control now and the pedestrians. We have the pedestrian facility only on the east side. CDOT was supportive and intends to incorporate into the design drawings, the rapid, we're going to reset the rapid flash beacons. So the pedestrians will continue to have access and be able to use those. I'm excited about the potential improvement to the north here. Currently, the pedestrian has to cross all the way. Two, three lanes of traffic to get across there, plus wide shoulders. And as we talked about in the videos here, now we'll have a splitter island in the center. We'll have a refuge. We'll have slower speeds and shorter crossing distances. So. I fully expect it to be safer than the current situation. And CDOT is on board with it.
Okay. Um, next question has to do with, uh, you know, the, the video that you were showing. I mean, it's great. I, I, I get it. What I wasn't seeing though was what I think are higher traffic volumes that we have at times in Estes Park. That was the video I didn't see and I.
Actually you did.
Okay.
You did see it and it's a really interesting question and I'm glad you asked it because it's something I, I forget about. The perception of traffic at a roundabout, it looks like there's less traffic. Cause with this, if you have the same amount of traffic with, with the roundabout is designed to handle that traffic and a signal to handle the traffic. Typically the signal looks like there's more traffic because it's all queued up.
Right.
Roundabout processes traffic more efficiently and it just looks like there's less traffic. So some of the projects that I showed are quite high-volume intersections. Pedestrian ones with the two-lane entries, those are, those are projects that are carrying 30,000 ADT. Approximately, plus or minus, depending on the.
Okay. And I think that was the part I didn't see because I'm not seeing the queuing at the intersection because we're not zooming back far enough. But I would like to see that at, at, I, I'm sure you've got video like this.
What is, you want to see a, a congested roundabout?
Yeah. Well, no, I want to, I want to see.
We're designing them not to be congested.
No, no, no. Well, no, that's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking for is I want to see, I, I, and I'm thinking about Highway 36 as it comes into town. Where traffic is backed up for a couple of miles and some of it happens, this will certainly improve the left turn onto community drive. I get that because that's part of the backup problem. But what I'm looking for is um.
Assurance of, of how that's going to perform.
Yeah, yeah. I want to see higher volume bumper to bumper coming up to that intersection. That's what I didn't see.
Would it, would the traffic simulation that we have on file showing the modeling at Moraine, which is handling the same volumes, answer your question?
Yeah, but I'm not interested in the traffic simulation. I'm actually interested in.
I'd like video of a real.
I, I've run through the analysis at Wonder View. That, that's the project that I've been working for, for the town on. And so I'm familiar with the traffic there and I've gone through the, the analysis using the software that we use.
Okay.
to determine, so that westbound...
To that point, what we've learned thus far in the analysis of that intersection is the intersection will actually handle more traffic than the Highway 36 can feed it.
Okay, okay.
I would get into more details.
And then, the last point, you know, the more I read about this, it's, there are good designs and bad designs.
True.
Okay. And bad design...
Good designs and not-so-good designs.
Okay, okay. Let's call, I'm gonna call it a bad design. How do we know, as a board? Because, you know, we're looking at a design here, how do we know that that's a good design? What are the criteria for what you'd say, "You're a good design, has these elements in it, and here's the list?" Because you named a whole bunch of them.
Yes, right.
But how do I know?
You come to my, I have a two-day training seminar coming up soon, and I'll teach you everything you need to know.
Okay.
No, no, okay. I'm just joking aside.
Sitting here as a board, it's gonna see this.
One thing, one thing that, so, I've been working for myself for 13 years, specializing in roundabouts. I've been working on roundabouts for more than 20. And so what I do is, basically, how I go through life and make my living is, I work on project teams to ensure good designs, okay? So, I'm on this project, Greg's have, I know your other project has someone similar to me doing a peer review on it. And so it's a quality assurance, quality check to ensure a good design, and that's important to have on all your projects. There's things that, there's a skill set and experience that feeds into it.
We could, if you'd like, we can give you the checklist of attributes that a good design would have. Happy to do that, or you can trust that we will be looking out for that. My professional reputation in this community is on the line with these three roundabouts. And if they fail, the town will probably ask you all to move me along. And so I'm very...
And I worked for Greg's in the world. I know that.
Yeah, and I'm not questioning that, but I would like to see the checklist, just for my own edification, to know that those things had been addressed.
Sure.
That's all, it's just a simple checklist, I, you know? I'm not trying to re-engineer it, but I wanna know that, you know, all those things...
Some written assurance that we've looked at some of the key parameters.
Yeah.
Are there, I'm sorry, one second.
Just to follow up with that, so like on the project that's on the screen here, I've gone through, we have speed control checks. So in this concept design, this is not just, this adheres to those design checks. And we have that documented in memo, Greg could forward that to you, you could see those things, so.
So in your designs, go ahead, Greg, I'm sorry.
I was gonna ask if you wanted me to take some time, and we can go through and identify some of those features that Mark's already incorporated into here. From my point of view, the safety net that I'm putting underneath myself and underneath the town is before a roundabout, before our office signs off on a design, I'm looking for a third-party independent peer review from somebody who knows what they're talking about. That's why Mark's been invited to participate with us on this project. CDOT has a peer reviewer, an independent party doing the review on their design, as does Central Federal Lands on there. So all three of our designs have independent reviewers, which will achieve the goal you're looking for. But, yeah, we can, probably don't wanna take the time tonight, but I can absolutely put that together for you.
Right, right, okay.
I have one question. This is because people have asked me, in the design process, we're talking about designing what's perfect for us or whatever, is there a difference in engineering design for large vehicles that pivot towards the back versus for the front? And I mean that for the large, large campers holding the big Jeep behind them.
Yes, and what we do, in all cases, all of our consultants use a software package called Autoturn. And Autoturn has a very deep menu of design vehicles, and we will take the specific vehicle type that we want to make sure we can accommodate in the roundabout. And so, for example, the roundabout at Wonderview and this one at Community, the semi-trailer point, a horse trailer, is one of the design vehicles. A 39-foot RV point, a 26-foot-long enclosed camper or enclosed trailer with their run-around car inside of it is another design vehicle. So, yes, we are looking at the actual tire path that's traced by these vehicles and assuring that they can accommodate and navigate the roundabout easily.
Thank you. And there's a big difference between 18-wheeler driver that drives all the time and the person who rented the camper over in Iowa with the 20-foot vehicle behind him, yeah.
And we're looking into that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Oh, great, Mark, thank you very much, appreciate it. Great, thank you.